So, welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Monday, April 1st at 6:35 PM. Thanks for being patient, everyone. Emily, would you like to read the
Sure.
She loves it.
This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The meeting will be held in person in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, anyone intending to record the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide their name and address for the record. Et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, guidelines for business meetings speak one at a time, follow Deerfield Code of Conduct, be respectful, considerate, courteous, concise, and recognized by the Chair. And all identified board members present, Kathy Witroba?
Here.
Rachel Blaine?
Here.
Emily Gaylord?
Here.
Andrew Leibson?
Here.
Kathy Sylvester?
Here.
Denise Mason here, and Satu Zoller is absent. Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of February 5th?
Yes.
Yep, if so, any additions, corrections?
I have one correction. Like, oh, I'm sorry. Hi, sorry, there's one correction under Point 6. Leibson reported that the OSRC, it's Franklin Land Trust.
Oh.
Not just Franklin Trust. Just want to be more specific. Land Trust, and I'm sorry, where is that? Oh, number six. Yeah, good point. Good catch.
Number six.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
With the decisions, okay. Emily Gaylord, second. All right, vote Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, aye.
Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrew Leibson?
Andrew Leibson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
And Denise Mason, aye. Okay, so new business. Special permit here in 10 Jones Hill Road. I'm assuming that's you, okay. So notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Monday, April 1st, 2024, at 6:30 PM on an application filed by David and Martha Grace for special permit for property located at 10 Jones Road. Identifying the assessor's records as map 51 Lot 24 to create an accessory apartment in a detached structure on a permanent foundation on the same lot as primary single-family dwelling pursuant to zoning bylaw, Chapter 179, Section 39, 3932. Application doc documents available for review at municipal town offices or online www deerfield.mass.us in the calendar event. And if you'd like to step up to the table, please, and the mics. Whoops. And tell us about your project.
Yeah, we'd like to develop an apartment in an existing barn. So, we've rehabilitated it, it was in bad shape when we moved in.
And can I ask you just, you've got to speak like Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's a rehabilitated barn, and we'd like to develop a guest room or apartment space in there.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a one-bedroom space, a studio with a bathroom, of course, yeah.
Right, okay, so I understand that you already have a structure there that has two bedrooms, and that there will be a deed that so that you would not be able to add another bedroom to the existing structures.
Correct, yes, yep. The house is, was formerly considered a three-bedroom, and our septic system has the capacity for three bedrooms. But we only use two, we've had the assessor's office come out and confirm that, and we've also had a deed restriction written up, but we haven't recorded it yet. We're waiting for this meeting. But that would restrict the house to be only two-bedroom, and that the other bedroom would be in this apartment and barn.
Right, so if you ever did decide to sell, which I don't think you would, that would, that deed would hold?
Yes.
Hold test, okay.
Yeah, and I, yes, exactly, yeah. I believe that if we sold also, the next buyer would have to have the ADU permit again approved by the planning board.
That's, okay, probably another Title V.
I believe so, yes, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Planning Board, do you have questions?
I'm, this is Andrea, is there any kitchen facilities in this?
Yes, yep.
Second. Good job. I have a question.
This is Kathy Sylvester. Any plans for like Airbnb, or is this a long-term rental?
No plans for Airbnb, but especially for a guest room. But if we do have the ability for a long-term renting with the approval of the Board, then that's something that we might pursue in the future.
Yeah, you can do that, but you just, you can't do the less than 30-day rental.
Right.
I think that's what we decided, right, Rachel? So, good.
Yeah.
Glad that you're doing this, actually, it's your first one coming before us since we changed the bylaws.
Oh, exciting, yeah, I know. Good timing.
That's great.
Rachel, do you have any questions? Emily? Kathy? Andrea? All right, well, I'm going to open that up to any public comment. Yes, sir? If you could come up to the mic? Please?
Don't think it's necessary, but I'll give you a little history. My wife and I bought a couple of properties on Upper Road in 1972. One of them abuts their land by about 900 feet. When I, when I came here in 1972, long-term residents lamenting then that their children couldn't afford to live in Deerfield, and we don't have the housing stock. You've all seen the statistics in the, in the paper over the last two months on housing in the state, on the state level. They managed to sue one city back east because they've been exclusive, exclusionary. When the state does that, well, you know, it takes you, takes everything away from you, and state controls that. We're still in that position where we're not, as a, as a town, we're not doing great.
Right.
And, you know, we've talked about it for decades, and we're still not doing great. So, this is kind of a sweet, small alternative.
Yep.
And it's a neighborhood that, you know, I've known people that lived there in the 40s, and there had often on since World War II, there had been families combining and separating in dwellings. So it's nothing new in West Deerfield. And I, I toured the space the other day, and it's going to be a nice, pleasant space for some, for a person.
No, that's great.
So, I, I'm just speaking in favor of
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, no, you're right, we do
I'm sorry, and can you state your name, please, for the record?
Your name, sir?
William Cummings.
Cummings. So Kathy's your hero on this one.
Yeah.
Kathy Sylvester.
I'm working on it, and senior, senior housing next. That'll free up some other houses, and
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, I think the UMass study just said that Franklin County is at a deficit of about at least 25, 2,500 homes. So, I know.
And it's not when I say this politely, it's not a developer coming in and catering to retiring faculty from the university we need.
Yeah.
We need affordable housing.
Yeah.
And we need to disperse it as much as we can around the town. For a healthier neighborhood.
And we are well aware of that, and we're working on that, senior housing's, yeah. But thank you, thank you for speaking. All right, so, does anybody else, anybody online? Have a comment? No, all right. If not, I will close the public comment section of the public hearing and deliberation. Anybody have anything? Do I hear a motion?
So, can I just, this is a special permit, so we are approving a special permit. Yes.
So I make a motion, we approve the special permit?
How fitting, I'll second that. That's Rachel Blaine.
All right, Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, aye.
Rachel Blaine?
Aye.
Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrew Leibson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Denise Mason, aye. All right. Um, yes, as a matter of fact, we just have, before we close, okay, we haven't closed the public hearing yet. And Andrew, would you read the conditions?
Sure.
And you'll get a copy of them, too. Probably nothing you haven't already heard.
These are the conditions specified by the Planning Board. General conditions, number one, the applicant is responsible for obtaining all permits, approval, and licenses from other town departments and regulatory bodies as appropriate. Number two, the appointed agent for the Planning Board shall be the building commissioner. Number three, if anyone wishes to appeal this action and appeal arising out of the elements of this decision that is derived from the zoning bylaws must be filed pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17, within 20 days of the date that this decision was filed with the town clerk. Number four, following the 20-day appeal period, a certified copy of the special permit decision in the town clerk's office shall be recorded at the Franklin County Registry of Deeds at the owner's expense. A copy of the recorded decision shall be filed with the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number five, this approval shall lapse if construction has not begun, not yet begun, within one year after the applicant has received all state, federal, and local permits. If the applicant, for good cause, needs to be granted extensions for periods of one year at a time for completion of the project, the applicant shall apply to the Planning Board for an extension prior to the expiration of the approvals. Pre-construction conditions. Assigned deed restriction limiting the total number of bedrooms for both existing house and the proposed accessory dwelling unit to no more than three must be recorded at the Franklin County Registry of Deeds. Pursuant to Deerfield bylaws, Chapter 179, Section 3934, no building permit shall be issued for the proposed accessory dwelling unit without prior approval of the septic system by the Board of Health.
Right, thanks Andrea. Yes, and Amy will furnish a copy for you. Okay. All right, so, do I hear a motion to close this public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing, it's Kathy Sylvester.
Rachel Blaine, a second.
All right, Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba, aye.
Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrew Leibson?
Andrew Leibson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Denise Mason, aye, so the public hearing is closed, congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure it'll be wonderful.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay. Next.
We're just remarking that it's so new that it's not even on the application. So, on the application, with that special permit application, it says ADU, it's written in.
Oh.
The form is not updated.
The form, it's like written ADU.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
You can check it.
Okay, great. All right, okay, come on down. Yes. All right. If you guys don't mind sharing mics here?
If you guys could just sign in, I should have asked other people to sign into on that. If, if folks could just sign in on that little sheet that's on the table?
Yeah, a piece of paper.
The people who are just sign your names so we know who you are, thank you.
If that's my paper?
Yeah, that better.
Yeah, if you could just
So, there's one on the table that, that can be signed.
Oh, there is, okay. Yeah, guess we missed
I did.
Okay, great, all right.
That way I'll get your names right.
Okay, great, yeah, we're all set, Amy. So I'm going to open the public hearing for 84 Greenfield Road. Notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Planning, Deerfield Planning Board will hold the public hearing Monday, April 1st, 2024, at 6:30 PM on an application filed by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for site plan review for property located 84 Greenfield Road, identifying the assessor's records as map 159 Lot 16 to raise the existing communications tower by 20 feet, install an antenna at a height of 110 feet, install a walk-up cabinet inside an expanded compound, and to install a diesel generator next to existing Verizon generator pursuant to zoning bylaws, Chapter 179. Application documents available for review and foyer of municipal offices or online at www deerfield MA.us in the calendar event. All right, welcome.
Welcome.
All right, would you like to tell us about your project?
Yes, we'd love to. First of all, as a way of introduction, my name is Edward Paree, it's P-A-R-E, I'm an attorney of Brown Rudnick. I'm here representing New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, which operates as AT&amp;T. Good evening, and thank you for having us this evening. We have Frank Kelly is from the site acquisition firm for AT&amp;T. Our civil engineer is also here with us. So there is an existing tower at the South Oh, and we, and we have Martin, our radio frequency engineer, Martin Laven, from C-Squared.
Can you just make a little closer to the mic?
Sure.
Yeah, the Zoom people.
So, AT&amp;T has entered into a lease agreement with the South Deerfield Fire District. There's an existing monopole located at the site at 84 Greenfield Road. If you've driven by, I'm sure you've seen it. AT&amp;T is proposing to extend the pole by 20 feet, attach its antennas, similar to what Verizon has done, Verizon's an existing carrier at the site. What we're going to do to mitigate any impact is to match the fencing that's at the base of the pole. Verizon's equipment is actually in that little shelter next to the pole. We're going to extend the fence by three feet, three and a half feet. Same chain link with the slats will match it. We're also going to install our backup power generator over at, it's all 300 feet away, over next to Verizon, so that it mitigates any noise issues. We plan to test the generator, the same time that the fire district tests theirs in Verizon's. So, to the condition in the special permit. We're scheduled to appear before the zoning board on the 11th for a special permit. So this evening, we're here for site plan review. With that, I think we could be happy to answer any questions about the physical design or any background or information that any planning board members are interested in.
Questions? I mean, I've read through everything, and it seems, it seems pretty straightforward to me, and also there are federal, federal regulations that allow you to do this.
There are, but, you know, out of respect for the local process, we come to the planning board for site plan, and we'll be at the zoning, as I said, the zoning board. And in accordance with the zoning bylaw itself, co-location is obviously encouraged. Towns don't want more than one tower where, you know, it's not necessary, so we get to co-locate, the fire district, you know, receives the benefit of having it in one location. Generators are there, you know, it's a good-sized lot. It's going to have a pretty low impact, you know, with, except for the 20-foot extension, which will probably be unnoticed once it's up, and people used to drive by.
Yep, go ahead.
So what is the purpose of doing it? Because what is it serving?
Yeah, AT&amp;T does not have coverage in the area. We do have some coverage maps if we want to put them up, but we're not anywhere in the area, so AT&amp;T customers are not, you know, going to get good service in that area. Once we attach, AT&amp;T will have, you know, very good service in that local area.
And when is that happening?
Well, the permitting process will take us a few months, so I'd say probably year end, possibly to next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, I know Mr. Walden, our building commissioner, is online, I don't know if, do you have any comments?
No, I really don't have any comments. Everything's pretty straightforward. I, no comments.
Right, we, we talked, I think there's something about a canopy, and so with this, the permission, you haven't quite decided whether you want to put the canopy on or not.
Yeah, we, we had submitted some revised plans, I think Amy has them, and hopefully she circulated them, so above the equipment cabinets themselves, there'll be a canopy just for any rain issues when the engineer comes in, or, you know, if any ice accumulates on any of the antennas and falls, so it's a safety thing, and it'll be within the fence compound, it'll be above the, above the equipment cabinets that we have to pick on the fence. So you should have the revised plans.
Yeah.
May I ask, is there a tower that's this height in our area now? Bob, do you know?
Well, I don't know how tall the one is on the mountain, but I mean, in the general area, there's towers, not necessarily in Deerfield, but yes.
Where, have you
Yeah, I mean, we have towers throughout, you know, throughout the area, this would probably be a pretty low tower in comparison.
Right.
We're typically on a tower where we're trying to get a good footprint of coverage, 150, 180 feet, the ones you see on the highway are probably up at 180, 190. Typical 140, 150.
It's not going to do a nice big pine tree tower.
It's going to look very much
Yeah, they're really
They do stand out.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate the effort. The punch.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, I've read through it, I certainly don't have any questions or any issues with that, and I know I spoke with Mr. Walden about this. And once again, federal law says that no laws or actions by any government, blah, 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 that we can't, you know, can't prohibit the placement or construction and modifications, so, I mean, it seems pretty simple. All right. I'm going to open this up to public comment. Yes, sir? Yeah, just grab a mic, and then if you could please state your name, and then also fill out your piece of paper.
So I'm Bill Swayze, I'm the fire chief here for the South Deerfield Fire District. It was our intent in 2017 when we installed that tower to go up an additional 20 feet. It was built to support this extension, it's going to bring additional revenue into the district, you know, helping out with our tax base, so I just wanted to represent the South Deerfield Fire District and say we're 100% favor of this project moving forward.
Great.
That was in 17, did you say, Bill?
2017.
17.
Okay, okay, wonderful. So can you, can you tell me how, I mean, will it benefit, benefit your communications?
Right now, the majority of our firefighters are on AT&amp;T, and we've got horrible service right at our fire station and within it, so it'll, it'll definitely assist us. A lot more people are walking outdoors, you know, we've done a lot more rescues with cell phones and GPS coordinates. So we use CalTopa, which is an app, and it'll immensely help us with those rescues.
No, that's great, good, great, thank you. All right. Anybody, Martin, do you have anything to say? No?
No, Martin's there for questions if we need him.
He's just here hanging.
We just try to be prepared.
Okay, all right, okay. Any, anybody else in the audience who has any comments? No? Okay, if not, I'll close the public comment, and we'll go to deliberation.
Are you looking for a motion to close?
Well, yeah, I mean, deliberating, I mean, I
Comment. We don't have anything.
Excuse me?
Close the public comment?
Okay, I'll do it.
Then we close public comment for this public hearing? The special permit? Emily Gaylord, second. Right, Kathy Witroba?
Kathy Witroba.
Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrew Leibson?
Andrew Leibson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Denise Mason, aye, okay, now we can deliberate, any
I was on the board when we did this the first time around.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, 2016, absolutely. Because that's where we I don't know that you came here.
Yeah, I was going to say
But I was, I was at this hearing when Ron Bahon was
Zoning Board?
CBA, yeah.
It's like Old Home Week, right?
Old Home Week, yeah.
So I have a question. I have a question. Can I ask them a question?
You may.
So, maintenance, who, who monitors the structural integrity of this additional part of the tower, and how often is it inspected?
The structure itself, I'm not sure it's inspected.
Not the structure itself, but the addition that AT&amp;T is adding to it.
Yeah, so AT&amp;T monitors all of its sites, 24/7, they have a network operations center. The structure itself, I don't, I don't know even, you know, AT&amp;T's extension, but we'll have to apply for building permit, we'll have structural to present to, I think it's Bob Walden, the building official.
Yeah, I've read this, I've read this.
Will undertake those.
And if it's not up, they don't get the
It'll have to be
That's their business, I mean
It'll be, it has to be in accordance with the building code, which
Yeah.
which Mr. Walden, I'm sure, reviews our application for.
Any other questions, any? No? Do I hear a motion?
Do you hear a motion? To
Do you have to read these?
Yeah, you probably should read the
Oh, boy. Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is, I don't know if you need to read all
Okay, well, you tell me.
I mean, you're Yeah, it's like three pages of conditions that
Why don't I read the general?
Yeah, read the general, and then you'll get a copy of this.
So just to clarify, there are general conditions, there's pre-construction conditions, and there's construction addition. What is the word I'm looking for, conditions?
Right.
And then project completion conditions. We'll read the general ones, we'll share the rest. And I can even, well, if you don't mind having Jones Road, I could just hand this to them.
No, just go ahead, yeah, read the general, I mean, the general ones are the
They're basically the same. All right, general conditions for approval. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all permits, approval, and licenses from other town departments and regulatory bodies as appropriate. The appointed agent for the Planning Board shall be the building commissioner. If anyone wishes to appeal this action and appeal arising out of the elements of this decision that is derived from the zoning bylaws must be filed pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17, within 20 days of the date of this, that this decision was filed with the town clerk. Following the 20-day appeal period, a certified copy of the special permit decision from the town clerk's office shall be recorded at the Franklin County Registry of Deeds at the owner's expense. A copy of the recorded decision shall be filed with the building inspector prior to the issuance, issuance? Of a building This approval shall lapse if construction has not yet begun within one year after the applicant has received all state, federal, and local permits. If the applicant, for good cause, needs to be granted extensions for periods of one year at a time for completion of the project, the applicant shall apply to the Planning Board for an extension prior to the expiration of the approvals. Those are the general conditions, there are pre-construction, construction, and project completion conditions that I'll share with you. I don't think it should be anything mind-blowing.
We don't have any issues with the general.
We'd all be hoarse by then. We have to read every single one, all right. Okay, so Vote.
Accepting the
Put it to
We have a vote.
We have to vote.
I move, we moved it? We presented the
Go ahead.
Didn't I move?
Did you move?
I moved it, and then we read the conditions, now we just need to vote.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I moved that we approved the special permit for 84 Greenfield Road.
I'll second it, Kathy.
If I may, it's actually site plan, though, that's the
I'm sorry, site plan review.
Yeah. It's zoning board.
Site plan review, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
SPR.
Okay.
Emily Gaylord, second.
Kathy Witroba?
Aye.
Rachel Blaine?
Aye.
Emily Gaylord?
Andrew Leibson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
And Denise Mason, aye. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah. Let me give that to you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
And don't forget, someone has a briefcase in those Excuse me, sir, is that, someone else's a briefcase?
Well, you can
Oh, leave that there. Okay, great, thank you. Okay. Busy night. What happened to my All right, we have That is fair, I know, I'm looking at my Okay, here it is. Okay, so Public hearing, number three. Public hearing number three. No, it's toast in here. All right. Okay.
See Gary?
Hey, Amy, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Thanks.
Would you mind enabling us to share the screen?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Two seconds to figure that out.
Okay, in the meantime, I'm going to open the public hearing for the Leary Lot, continue.
Okay, you're good.
Notices hereby given that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty PM on an application filed by the town of Deerfield for site plan review amendment for property located fifty-nine North Main Street, map one sixty-eight, lot one twenty-eight for the addition of an underground cistern, an irrigation system to the parking lot and other improvements behind the main storefronts at the corner of North Main and Elm Streets pursuant to zoning bylaws, Chapter one seventy-nine and Chapter one fifty-five. Application documents available for review in foyer of municipal offices or online at www.deerfield MA.us in the calendar event. All right. Would you like to?
Sure.
Give your presentation? Can you, the mic right up, so people online can hear you.
Chris is bringing up the presentation. So my name is Jeff Squire with Berkshire Design Group here on behalf of the town of Deerfield for design and construction of the Leary Lot.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good to see you all again. This is really just to provide you all with an update as to some modification, changes, additions to the plan. In general, it really looks and will function very much the same as what was previously proved. And as Chris is going through this, and ironically, we certainly have to get in more discussion. The one thing you've mentioned in the advertisement with regards to the cistern is probably the one thing that isn't going to happen for various reasons, but. There are a number. It is a stormwater thing between the Hamshaw, the adjacent property, and how this interacts with that requirements. I haven't bored you with the details, but I'll sort of highlight some of the other changes, which include, I think, one of the big ones, yeah, and I don't, I presume you may just want to sort of go through the first couple of slides.
Sure.
So this was just a rendering of the original and the site plan that was approved at the last meeting. Again, all of this effectively looks exactly the same. If you go to the next sheet, so here, what I've highlighted really are the changes. The most significant ones are really extending the project out to wrap around the corner so that we improve the sidewalk at the corner of North Elm, or north of Elm Street and North Main. So improving, you know, the curbing and the parking, the parking spaces along North Main, new concrete sidewalk, you know, along that, you know, whole stretch of roadway there, and then relocating the crosswalk that's currently sort of mid-block in. And when you look at the common roughly in this location right now, a bunch with that sort of diagonal walkway, as it's not an ideal location for lots of reasons. So as part of this, we're able to move that to the north a little bit and align that in a place that makes a lot more sense.
Can I ask a question about that first? Because, okay, that's not under DOT.
That section of road is not DOT controlled, right, which is the other reason to do this.
Right.
So, yes, but just improving accessibility and pedestrian connections. There's a small segment of walk that will extend into the common to reconnect up with the existing walkways, but all of that is, you know, part of the accessibility improvements. To the north side of that North Main curb cut, we just reload. There were previously a couple of bike loops adjacent to the picnic tables, sort of ended the lot a little bit. There was a request to move those out toward the street and up along the sidewalk there. So we've relocated those bike racks to that location, the bench, and everything is still, is still there. And then the other big improvement is bringing in water service from both North Main and then also from Elm Street into the site so that there is at least a connection point for irrigation or watering if that becomes a need. We're adding two water fill stations. There's one at the picnic table area, the other one at the raised crosswalk and this entrance to the brewery potentially, but there's another water fill station in that location. So that's the other sort of big, you know, site improvement that's, that's been added to the project. So, yes, I think those are the major highlights. The reason for the cistern, just to entertain you all, the reason for the cistern is that, so there was a lot of money that could have been spent on a, you know, underground, you know, collection system that would have been used, you know, a pump system would have had been set up to pump for, for an irrigation in the future. The issue is that for that to benefit, for that storage volume to benefit Hamshaw or any project over there, it would have necessitated that tank being empty at a, at a storm event, because that's when you do the drainage calculations, you're anticipating there's going to be a certain volume of space available for a storm event. And so. We've done this in other projects, and it means that you need to put a little weather station on it so that when, in the event of rain or pending rain, it pumps the system out, and so that that volume is then available, because otherwise that stormwater doesn't have anywhere to go. So it turned into a whole lot of parts and pieces that got expensive and that, you know, became a maintenance and management issue. And so we have subsequently, and the other thing was for us to catch up a little bit with the Hamshaw project to make sure that we could, you know, in fact, do everything that we, you know, need to do over there. And so one of the benefits is that, you know, we have a subsurface system behind what they're proposing for an addition. What we're going to do is essentially, it's a stone chamber system underneath the ground. We're just going to butt the stone up against the stone underneath the reservoir for the porous parking lot. So there's going to be this giant storm reservoir below Hamshaw's parking lot that connects then to this entire porous asphalt parking lot. So hydraulically, there'll be one, you know, large stormwater reservoir in this, in this general area that will accommodate, you know, a lot of water.
On Hamshaw property, though.
What's that?
It's on the Hamshaw property?
Well, their system is going to be on their property.
Yep.
But because everything is built in stone, you know, this, what's below the porous, you know, asphalt is a large stone reservoir. It's the same kind of stone that goes around their subsurface system. So we can just butt the two sort of stone, you know, surfaces against each other. So it's, you know, effectively one giant stone, you know, stormwater reservoir.
And Hamshaw has agreed to that?
They, we've, we've been updating them with, you know, regards to process. And yeah, I mean, they were willing to share a cistern. I think this is a much more, you know, palatable solution from their end, management-wise. So it, you know, I think the net benefit is that there's going to be, you know, a lot, a lot of stormwater volume potential between those two, these two projects.
And this has a lot to do with the porous, porous surface, too.
Exactly.
That's the issue.
Yep.
That's nice.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, if this was a traditional asphalt system, there's no way we'd be able to do that.
Wouldn't have any way around it.
Yep.
No, that's great. And thank you for listening, because I think there was a gentleman last time that did talk about moving the bike rack. So thanks for listening to him about that, you know, for safety reasons. So that's good. And I'm pleased to see that we have more sidewalks, too.
Yeah. And we love that. The other thing that I didn't highlight on here is we did add a number of other plants to the plant list, increased a bunch of the sizes. You know, we've, we've got a number of three-inch caliber trees in places that we can. So it'll be a much healthier, you know, more robust landscape when, when all is said and done, which, which will be nice.
Who was going to maintain the, um, Mike?
This is from Andrea. Who's going to maintain the plantings and? The, the foliage?
Evan.
That, Chris, speak to that. That will fall to the town.
DPW.
Yes.
As will the cleanup for the, for the, the parking lot.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And, and it'll be interesting to see, too, with the porous surface, because that is always one of the concerns with porous surfaces, the maintenance, general maintenance and snow coverage, how to clear it, blah, blah, blah.
Well, I live on Grave Street, and I'm very excited about the crosswalks because walking through the common is like a labyrinth a little bit. I also think that this type of design is something we're going to need to start really preparing for. We saw the storms last year, and we just need to be building a more climate resilient town. So I'm glad we're thinking ahead that way because I think it's inevitable that the storm events are only going to get more severe and more common.
I'm just really happy. I was just going to make a comment. I'm just really happy this is how, because all I've been hearing about is the Leary Lot for the past however many years. So it's finally happening. It's pretty exciting.
Nineteen ninety-six is when I believe the town bought it.
Oh, my goodness.
We're making it happen now.
So when is it starting?
So we're expecting construction in some form to begin as early as this month. It would likely involve just the wiring portions of it first. In terms of civil and site work, that would come after a lengthier bid process, which we are eager to make sure happens during this construction season, and we know the clock is ticking on that. So definitely before summer, I would say, is, is ideal, but I don't have an exact timeline for when we can point that.
Okay.
Andrea? I was going to ask how many electric vehicle chargers will there be total for this lot?
Good question. So there are a total of four chargers, meaning there are a total of eight ports. Four of those ports will be level two, and four of those ports will be level three fast chargers.
That's great.
Right.
And I think I did ask this question at the last, the beginning of the public hearing about how will people know about this? And have you, we considered putting something on five and ten to indicate that there are? So that'll be a draw to bring people into town.
Yeah, I think signage could definitely be considered. I don't believe it's been part of this process, but it could absolutely, after the, after the project is built, be something to add on. I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, good.
There's also a lot of apps that electric vehicle users rely on. And so as long as we can get it registered, then people will look for chargers in the area. And that would be another way to.
Yeah, sort of like GasBuddy.
Exactly.
Same kind of thing. Yeah. But signage is good, too.
Signage is queen.
Yeah, definitely. Good. Wow. Did you hear that?
Then our regs. Yeah.
Welcome to Deerfield. Come charge your car.
Yes.
Go to a restaurant.
Are you the, are you the point person for the town?
Yes, I have been managing, and by the way, I didn't introduce myself for the, for the audience. I'm Chris Nolan, Assistant Town Administrator. I have been working on this project in partnership with our lead architect, Jeff Squire from Berkshire Design Group. And in the audience, you'll see David Pomerance from Rivermore Energy. They've been taking on a managerial and consultant role throughout the process. It's been a fantastic team effort, and we're really happy with the design product that we've gotten and looking forward to seeing it come to life this year.
And Chris, you've been doing a great job. So thank you so much for taking this on.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Really important project.
Yes.
All right. So do we have, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Do we have any, anybody online?
We can, the.
Excuse me?
Oh.
Just in case there are folks that want to weigh in.
Maybe you could stop the screen here. Unless maybe somebody has questions.
I don't see anybody. Fran, do you have any comments? Or just? Listening, which is fine. Mr. Walden, do you have any comments? Anything?
No, no, no comments. I think it's going to be great.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bob. All right. So I'm, since we have no public comments, I'm going to close the public comment section of this. Okay, do I hear a vote? Oh, wait, do I hear a motion to close the public?
So what are we moving?
I move, Emily Gaylord, I move to close public comment.
There you go.
I second Kathy Wetraba.
Okay, all right. All in favor, Kathy Wetraba?
Kathy Wetraba, aye.
Rachel Blaine?
Rachel Blaine, aye.
Emily Gaylord?
Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrew Leibson?
Andrew Leibson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester?
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Nice Mason, aye. So public comment is closed now. So this is for the site plan review.
Amendment.
Yes.
Right. As we've already.
Yeah, and it was a continuation of the public hearing that we had last month. All right.
Right.
So are there any other questions that the board has of the applicant?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Andrea.
Maintenance plan. Is there, is there a written maintenance plan for, for this?
We do not have a written maintenance plan at this time, but one will be produced during the process.
And it's, again, it's our DPW. That's the agent for the O and M plan.
Correct.
And it's in our promote, proposed conditions as well.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay, all right.
Is there a butter notification process? Have they been notified already?
Yes, the butters were notified.
On the amendment?
Yes, and I think.
Yes.
Speak to that. Amy?
Yes, yes, they were notified. It's been in the paper, and they were notified by mail.
Thank you.
And will they be notified when construction starts as well or in advance?
I don't believe there is a requirement that they be notified prior to construction. I think we can, we can work on making sure that there is sufficient outreach to make people aware with reasonable notice when they can expect to start seeing construction vehicles entering the site on a regular basis.
Might save you a headache or two.
Yes, that's a very good point.
I'm sorry. At our last meeting, we had, and I don't remember her last name, Linda, who's very, very, very nice. She came and she was concerned, and I think we brought up that she's the landlord, but Rachel brought up that, that the, the actual tenants were not notified. And so I asked Linda, I said, please let them know and have them, you know, come to the meeting tonight, and I don't see anyone here. So maybe she's had a conversation with them.
Her last name was Kocinski.
Yes, I've, I've worked with Ms. Kocinski fairly extensively throughout the process. We've been working to nail some of her initial concerns, and I think we've come to a lot of mutually agreeable solutions.
Okay, great. Good. All right, okay. So are there other questions? Any more questions of the applicant?
For Andrea's concern about the O and M, can we set a time or a date so that we have some sort of sense of when we could see an operations management plan, you know, maintenance plans?
And I can't speak with a hundred percent certainty, but I wouldn't be surprised if there wasn't one in the stormwater report that was included with the original site plan application. Typically, we would include one in the back of there, so I can double check, but we may have written one already as part of that stormwater management plan, because typically we will.
Okay, I'll go back and look at it. Right. It just would be good to kind of, I think, for, from our point of view, just to be supportive of the town, not that we're doubting, but just so that.
Yep.
Who can assure everybody on all.
Right.
Yes, we're going to spend money and create something new and good. We want to make sure it's properly maintained.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. All right. Oh, Trevor.
I know maybe Chris has already had this conversation, but before I left, I just wanted to see if there's a way to, and it looked like on the plan that that sidewalk is kind of still in flux, and I really wanted that to line up. And you may have already had that discussion with whatever we plan on the common. And I know that's like shooting a dart at something that's like, but I think maybe one's going to force the other, but just in the plan of when we redo the common, that, that sidewalk from Cheslick's Corners, Leary Lot Corner over to, over to the common is somehow meshes. That's all.
Yeah, we looked into that somewhat extensively after a recent select board meeting where that same topic came up. It looks like they line up perfectly. As I've already, you know, the formatting might be slightly different between the two designs, but we tracked it down to exactly where they fall in relation to. Yeah, in, in relation to where the fire hydrant is on the common side, I believe, and also in relation to where the catch basin is on the side of Cheslick's Market, and, and they match up perfectly with one another.
That's great.
I have a question. I'm not entirely sure if it's pertinent to this, but the roadway that goes. By Hamshaw, have we determined if that is a one-way or?
The.
North-south, or is it just? the north-south, or is it just a one-way road?
Was our most recent iteration?
You're talking about the new, the new exit?
Yes. Is it just an exit or is it an exit and entrance? That's the question.
I think it's, yeah, I thought it was left as a to be determined, yeah.
So the original plan is to have a two-way and if that becomes problematic, then we'll change it for, to a one-way. The parking that's like, I just think this section is gonna need a, some review. Um, I, I think it's a tricky, tightly tight, tricky space right there with hot out and the parallel parking on one side, diagonal parking on the other sidewalk that goes across that section. Um, and it's, it's not, um, openly visible. It, it's, I just think it's a tricky spot. I think it's gonna be worth some, some considerations. And can I ask another question? So it looked like, I can't see it on this plan, but it looked like the, the entire width was eighteen feet, which wasn't very wide. It would make each lane pretty, what would be the width of each lane and what would be a standard width for a lane?
I believe the entire width now is, yeah, it's probably eighteen feet because of the need for sidewalk on.
Yes, the median lines.
Yeah, so we're, um, you know, that, it's a, it's a narrow residential road. It's a, you know, it's, you can get it to nine-foot lanes, which is certainly doable and, you know, if people are slowing and paying attention.
Well, it would be a nine-foot lane if there wasn't a median line. So there's gonna be another foot in the center there, which is gonna cut that down to eight feet per lane, which may even have a foot, a foot buffer, which is now making it a seven-foot lane, which is pretty tight. It's pretty narrow. I just, you know, it, it's small, narrow road that goes to a large parking lot and multiple businesses. I, I, I think it will need to be a point of concern. Does DOT have any say on? Is that part of DOT? No, so that's, that's under the jurisdiction of the town.
Has Kevin Scarborough or anybody from DPW?
Chief, chief wanted it to be a two-lane way.
I'm sorry, can people speak into the microphones? I can't hear you.
That's Trevor. He's bad like that.
I know chief wanted it to be a two-lane way. We also wanted that to really take the traffic coming into the center of town to go directly in that way, but, um, and we felt like if it was gonna be one-way, it'd probably best that that be an exit. So we wanted to kind of see how that laid out, see what it looked like. Try it for a little bit and we may all go, this isn't working. This needs to be a one-way, but, uh, but it would be, it would be definitely narrow. We want people five miles an hour obviously through there, you know, just, it's a parking lot, so, uh, not going very fast. But it is something we're definitely looking at. We may have to change.
So Chief Pachorek would like it as a two-way for a safety.
I think, yeah, he just felt like with the way traffic moves around in town, I think he, he, I think that was his intention. I, don't quote me on that, because he may have changed his mind since he's looked at a different plan, but, um, that, that was it originally and he felt like if it was going to be one-way, that I think that would be the exit.
Yes, and if, as a two-way, it would prevent a bottleneck somewhere else, which is around the corner by the market.
Right, right, because there's that, you know, three o'clock when everybody gets out. It's backed up all the way to the high school.
Big traffic jam.
Right, for five or ten minutes.
Okay, that makes sense. That, that does make sense to have a two-way and then if that does not work. I, I just think we'll, we'll have to have some precautionary measures at that entrance and exit, like the sidewalk and just road signals, something. It's, it's just a weird, narrow congested space getting into it. Then you go in from a narrow congested space into a more narrow.
So would a speed hump or bump?
It's an, it's an eighteen-foot wide travel. I mean, the, the, the road is eighteen-foot wide. We didn't have any intention of striping it. So it does provide some flexibility. I mean, it's a wide driveway. Um, and I know there's curbing on one side that supports the sidewalk. I believe the other side is probably, um, I think we made as, as a berm, as a Cape Cod berm. So that, you know, if cars need to, you know, move over a little bit, they have the ability to ride up in the curb a little bit and get around. Um, yeah, and I don't, I don't think it's, you know, it's, I understand the, the, appreciate the concern for speed. I think it's, you know, fairly short distance and narrow enough going on that, you know, adding a speed bumper or some other controls there would just complicate things that there's enough going on to.
It's short.
You shouldn't need it. I mean, how wide is Grave Street? Talk about narrow streets. It's a lot longer than that.
Yeah, any other questions of the applicant? So you'll be monitoring that, you know, as far as the two-way. If you hear a bunch of complaints and stuff, you reconsider, make it one-way, yeah, okay. That makes sense. I personally don't anticipate a lot of people coming into Elm Street from five and ten and making a left into that parking lot.
It may not.
I, you know, but time will tell. Okay, other questions? Anybody? All right, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
We close the public hearing.
Yeah, we're closing, we're closing public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I am seconding the Rachel Blain.
Rachel Blain.
Rachel Blain, aye.
Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrea Liebson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Denise Mason, aye. Okay, and now, um, now we will vote on the application.
And it is.
I.
Site plan review.
Move that we accept the amended site plan review.
That's Emily. This is Rachel, seconded.
Were you two here to read the conditions?
Yeah, you know, so I, I, since I, yeah, I think we're going to waive reading the conditions for you.
And there's still the original conditions from the last.
And I'm sure you have them all memorized.
I have them in a file. How's that?
That you do. Okay, great. All right, then, um, all right. Kathy Witroba.
Kathy Witroba, aye.
Rachel Blain, aye.
Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrea Liebson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
And Denise Mason, aye. So.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We are excited and we can't wait.
We are as well.
We need to have a ribbon cutting. No, it'll be great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Can't wait to park.
Thanks, Chris.
Parking lot is a mess.
All right, thanks, Bob. We're all done.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Fran.
Night, night.
And Amy, oh, oh, do I hear?
Wait a minute.
Gosh, I'm sorry. I closed the hearing. I'm jumping the gun here. All right, any old business, um, VESH update? Well, the VESH update is that I think Amy did speak with John Furman. They are planning on doing the parking lot. And that's all I know. Amy, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yeah, John Furman said he thought they were making, uh, some sounds like they were getting ready to do it, but that's about it. I did write them directly and never heard back. So, you know, they, they've got a ear.
Okay, yeah, the sound is really bad, so, okay. Landfill solar update? Anything on that? I know it's on the list. I know, I, I think, I'm not sure whether the town and, um, whether they've come to an agreement on the lease. Is Chris now? I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, la- last I knew, they were, uh, still having discussions about the lease.
Okay, great, thanks. And the nine oh one River Road Solar Annual Report, have we received that?
Uh, yes, we have, um, and I am sorry, I think I might have neglected to put it in your packages, so I will send that out to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, do we have any other business? Not reasonably anticipated? Nope. Okay, we did get a lot of a budding town hearing notices. That was very exciting. All right. Do we have any reports?
The Open Space Committee continues to work on trying to figure out how to permanently preserve some town-owned pieces of land. It's very complex, apparently. We, um, the members of the Open Space Committee have met with the, uh, Conscom. I don't know the result of that. I was afraid I was out of town. And several of us on the Open Space Committee attended, uh, mass, um, land trust conference and learned some interesting things about, um, about ways to preserve land and, uh, do mapping, et cetera, uh, for, for trails, so.
Great, thank you. Kathy?
Uh, Community Preservation Committee is forwarding the eighteen eighty-eight building, um, application to the Fall Town Meeting.
So which one is eighteen eighty?
That's the, um, old senior center. So they're, they're not quite done with the, the plans, so, um, so that's still on the table and senior housing, yeah, that's moving forward. So that's exciting. Um, and also the Community Preservation Committee is gonna have a public hearing in the fall, probably, to tell people in the town what it is we do, because I think a lot of people don't really know. And, uh, yeah.
And there was, um, because I did attend the, wait, you're on the CPC? Okay, so I did attend that meeting and one thing that was brought up was a painting to, um, to be restored and I think that the, I mean, you should re.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to it. I was just figuring since we didn't approve it.
No, it's fine. I, I, I think it's, I think it's important for people to know.
I think, you know, it's, it's when you're making these decisions, you have to look at what are the regulations and the laws around it. And unfortunately, the application really wasn't complete. So, um, it had private ownership, which is a problem if you're giving taxpayer money to a private entity that doesn't have any public benefit. And since there's no place to hang the painting, there's no public benefit. Now, you could give it to the town and then there's public benefit because the taxpayer owns the painting, right? Even if you're not hanging it up, if the town would accept it. But if it's a private organization, it has to show public benefit, which they couldn't do. So we had to turn that down, so we really, we didn't approve any applications this year. We had another application for the Tri-Town Beach for a dock, but they're not, that application wasn't complete either. And they didn't have approval from Waitley, uh, so anyway, we hope.
So you had no approved, you're not endorsing any projects?
Unfortunately.
Until.
Until the eighteen eighty-eight in the fall, we hope that that will be approved. I mean, we're working with them on that. And we also are going to town meeting with a change in the CPC bylaw, because right now, one of the statutory requirements is have someone represent housing from the Regional Housing Authority and there is nobody. Because nobody from Deerfield is on that. So we're changing that language, which small towns like us can do, since we don't have our own housing authority, to name a resident in town to represent housing. So.
Yeah, well, that, there'll be any, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because otherwise, also, there's also.
There's also quorum issues and right now we don't have anybody from the rec department that will attend our meetings. So that's, that's one down every, every, every meeting.
Two down then. Yeah, Kathy, I just wanted to add some little clarification on that painting. It was approximately, what was it?
Eight by sixteen.
It was eight by sixteen feet. Okay, and the first part was close to, I don't know, it was three thousand something, close to four thousand dollars. And that, that was just preliminary to possibly stabilize it. And then they would have to raise a lot more money. But, but I think one of the big issues is that there was no place to hang it. And we asked Mr. Newman from PVMA and he said, no, too small. So, you know, that's part, that's part of what, what the applicant needs to do is to say, where is this going to be? And we thought it would, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm done on the committee, but I did speak. And I said, I think it was premature and I felt uncomfortable with the application because there was not a permanent location to house that painting. And I don't think taxpayers want to pay for something that they don't know what's going to happen.
Right, we, we had told him that too many times and he still couldn't get that. He couldn't secure a place for it. It's, it's a hard painting to find a place.
I mean, it's a religious painting.
It was a religious.
So have they approached any of the town churches?
Yes.
They did, no?
Well, originally, the, when the church closed down, I think in two thousand nine, the painting went elsewhere and then the gentleman who bought, you know, he searched it out and bought it. And it's lay, it's in the church right now, but that'll have to go because senior housing is buying.
In a auction house. For years. And, and someone in, from Texas bought it, but they never retrieved it. So he ended up getting it back and hoped to have, you know, because it has historical value. The painter is, is well-known. So you could get around the church versus state issue on the historical aspect, but if you don't have a place to hang it, you don't have public benefit. You can't spend public money on something that's privately owned. So no public benefit, so.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. Um, I'm on the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Committee. And so we've, we've had to do three trainings, which have been really exciting. And, and so. Yeah, Ca- I, Carolyn owes me on that one. Hope you're listening. But at any, after doing that, then we'll be eligible to get more money and, you know, as we all know, we need culvert repairs. So, so that's a process. Um, also, a couple, close to two years ago, we did get a grant, grant for shared streets and spaces to put crosswalks and beacons. Now that we have a new planning, planning guy, Christopher Dunn, he's working on that. So I've been working with him and, and FERCOG to actually move that project forward. So that's really good. So that will be happening. Um, the eighteen twenty-one, I don't know if anyone's been there, but soon it will house the, the temporary library. What, I think I mentioned this last time, and it just, it looks so good. Oh my gosh. And Tim Hilchi personally put in the floor in the kitchen. It looks so good.
What did he do?
Tim laid the floor and so it's, that's pretty exciting. And so when the, when the library moves out, then it will be a community space. So that's really cool.
And that saved the town forty-two hundred dollars on that floor, because that's what it would have cost to install.
Yeah, oh, yeah, Tim's done a lot of work.
He needs a gold star.
I know, he does. And what else? Oh, and then I'm on the CIPC Committee, but we should make recommendations to finance. So that'll be really interesting at town meeting to see what happens with that. But, yeah, but that's, that's all that's going on in town. And I guess our next meeting is May sixth.
When are allowed? Yes, town, annual town meeting is.
April twenty-ninth.
April twenty-ninth and town election. Uh, oh, so May sixth cannot be the next meeting, because that's, that's, um, that's town election.
Amy, did you hear that? May sixth, town election.
Oh my, that's right. Well, I thought, this was on the agenda to discuss last meeting. And I think you discussed it. We did choose an alternative date. I'll have to look at that. I'm sorry. I was just, uh, looking at the calendar and forgetting that. So, um, look. So I will look for what decision you guys made last meeting and I will let you know.
I'm having a really difficult time hearing you. The sound is absolutely horrible tonight, so we can discuss this later, but, um, so we should probably determine now when our next meeting would be. How would May th- move it to the next, the next Monday? Will that work?
I mean. Whoever gets elected. To planning board will attend then.
Yeah, okay. So, okay, so let's move it to May thirteenth then? Please?
Yep, I got that.
All right, well, thank you, Andrea, for. All right, well, thank you Andrea for figuring that one out. Okay, so I go, I think we're all set.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Kathy Metroba.
Kathy Metroba, aye. Emily Gaylord, aye.
Andrea Liebson, aye.
Kathy Sylvester, aye.
Denise Mason, aye. So a meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Amy, and we will talk later.